Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 8, 2022, meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Yep. Hetzke.
Hetzke here.
Burton.
Burton here.
Knauer.
Knauer here.
Tidings.
Tidings here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Gray here.
Okay. We have minutes from our last meeting on November 10. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to review them. Can we entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, Tidings.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knauer.
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. All right. Doug, you want to start going over our tabled items?
Yes, we'll go through the quick ones here. Tabled application number one, the Pathstone Project. We've been in contact with the engineers on the project. We're looking to set up a meeting with them to review what they're looking to do so they can come back as a sort of a sketch level review before the board. So at this time, you guys can continue tabling it.
So before we do that, the last time they were here, we made a request that they provide some more specific documentation relative to type of housing and any conditions for eligibility for the housing, et cetera. We had quite a bit of dialogue about that. Did anything go out to them to capture all the information from the public hearing?
Yes, we did send a tabling resolution outlining the board's requests.
Okay. Have we gotten any response from the applicant regarding that request?
Yes, their response was that they wanted to set up a meeting with staff to discuss and go through.
But they haven't actually responded to the information that we asked for?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Move to table?
I'll second.
Hetzke, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knauer.
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right, our second tabled application is the Chick-fil-A at 2130 Airport Nine Mile Point Road. That application has been quiet. We haven't received any updates. I do know the engineering department's been in contact with the property owner. I believe there may be some more conversation going on between the property owner and the applicant in this case. So at this time, since we don't have any new information to review, you can comfortably table it.
Okay.
Okay. Move to continue tabling.
Yeah, I'll second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knauer.
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right. Tabled application number three, the R G N E at 2070 Empire Boulevard. We have been in contact with the engineers and applicants on that one. They had, they did send in a formal request to be tabled until at least the January meeting. They said they were still trying to work on incorporating all of the board's comments and comments from the public, and they're hoping to be back at one of the January meetings.
Okay. Somebody want to?
Yeah, I'll move to table.
We have a second?
Tidings, second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knauer.
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
You want to talk number five and then go back to number four?
Yep. So 2305 Penfield Road, the three-lot subdivision. After the last meeting with the applicant, staff met with the applicant, their engineer, to go through some of the engineering challenges on the property. We did have a fruitful conversation with them and give them some suggestions and ideas going forward. So at this time, they have requested to be tabled so that they can look to gather more information specifically. I think they're going to be doing some deep hole testing to try to figure out bedrock depth on the site to see if they can look at alternative stormwater management techniques for the subdivision. So they've requested to be tabled until the January meeting.
Now, I had a question for staff on that. The group home that's next door, the water control facility they have there, is that a retention or a detention?
Retention, I believe.
And where does that drain?
It discharges to the east towards their property. And then, in an overflow situation, their overflow
Okay.
goes towards this property.
So just she flows down to their property?
No, there is an eight-inch pipe.
There's an eight-inch pipe that is basically at an elevation, so they can take the first hundred-year storm, and then if by every chance there's another hundred-year storm, that's when it would go through the outfall. Otherwise, it basically sits in there and evaporates, infiltrates, it does whatever it needs to do.
So that was basically designed to?
Detain.
Yeah, sorry, it might be a detention.
And prevent anything that would occur within a definition of a hundred-year storm for affecting the neighboring property?
Correct.
Okay.
But if there's two hundred-year storms in the same week?
Then all bets are off.
Then they
Well, we're all going to have to move, so.
They got a fire hose going into the neighbor's property.
Right.
Yeah, I was by the site and noticed that and just
Yes, there is, it's just basically an overflow for when it reaches that elevation. So it was sized accordingly.
Yeah, and there was, when I was by, there was no water in there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will move to table.
I'll second.
Hetzke, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knauer.
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right.
All right. Tabled application number four, the arbors at Penfield. Okay, so since our last meeting, staff has worked to draft an amended negative declaration. So in terms of seeker for this project, seeker was completed as part of the preliminary overall and final for Phase One. The board issued a negative declaration on July 14, 2022, adopting those findings that it was not going to have a moderate or large impact to the environment. The final application is largely in conformance with the preliminary application, same number of units, same layout generally, but there was new information that was presented since they are seeking to come in as one large secondary phase instead of multiple phases. It did change some information with traffic mitigation, and that was the primary section of the negative declaration that staff amended, was to include the new metrics by which New York State DOT was going to be requiring mitigations to be reviewed and installed instead of doing it on a per-phase basis, as has been previously reviewed by the board. State DOT agreed to do it based on certificates of occupancy issued, essentially breaking it down into four phases based on the number of units under review and for approval. In addition, they were looking to require, and it is something that was captured, that the mitigations would have to sort of be preemptive, that they would have to be installed prior to the phase under which they would be required will begin construction. And so that was captured both in, through correspondence with the applicant's traffic engineer in their T I S and an updated memo from their consultant. We did send it out to our consultant for review. He concurred with the findings of their consultant, as well as State DOT, who provided information that they were comfortable with the findings. So staff has drafted an amended, a draft amended negative declaration for your review.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I, I'm overall good with it. I think that we should, you know, potentially condition it based on a final review from our counsel. He's unable to be here, so I don't know if you want to go ahead and
Yeah. So I, I will make a motion for conditional approval for the negative declaration pending approval by counsel.
Tidings, second.
Hetzke, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knauer.
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
And I'd also make a motion for conditional approval pending review by counsel for the approval resolution.
Tidings, second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knauer.
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Go to work.
Go forth.
Have a good Christmas. All right. We can either talk about the, why don't we talk about the mud right now and then stop at seven versus doing it the other way around?
Okay. So as the board is aware, there was a moratorium placed in July of last year on the mixed-use development district to allow staff to review and revise the mixed-use development district regulations and the sub, and the manual that goes along with it, to provide greater clarity in the regulations, as you guys are aware, with the four applications we've reviewed up to this point in the mixed-use development district. There have been times where we've had challenges, where there was inconsistencies or ambiguity within the code. So staff has undertaken a review and has provided draft regulations to the town board. As part of the town board's review, they had held a public hearing last night. They're required to get input from the planning board as part of that. So I want to quickly run through with you guys what we changed, what stayed the same. So largely, things that stayed the same is the district boundaries. No new parcels were added, no parcels were taken out. The district has three zones, A, B, and C. Those district boundaries did not change, those zone boundaries did not change either. Some regulations will still apply universally within the district, whereas some will be zone-specific. And the maximum development density specified for each zones stayed the same. So it's still 20 units per acre in Zone A. And that, the changes that were made, we clarified the categorization of uses within a proposed development district. We moved a lot of information from the manual into the code, clearly defined what is the required mix of uses in each zone, you know, in this case, breaking it down based on the acreage of the property. And we moved all the development regulations and design standards from the mud manual directly into code. So that way, if there is any ambiguity between, or issue between the manual and code, the code will stand. We did make some procedural clarifications and modified the review process. We'll still go through the standard sketch plan and preliminary final review process, but we tried to make clear what the expectations should be between meeting with staff, sketch plan, what the sketch plan entails, what a sketch letter will result in, and what the preliminary final review will be like. We moved the terms and codes, which were sort of meshed into the manual and part of the code in the 5.12 section, just to the general, the code's terms-defined section. I think there's one more item on the last slide. And revise the mud manual. Sorry. So I guess we went through all those procedural changes. The other thing we did is we added administrative review, the way the code was currently written, especially for conditional use permits. Anytime, you know, Joe's Pizza Shop changed to Amy's Ice Cream Shop, we would have to come back for planning board review, as the code was previously written. It didn't allow for an administrative review for minor operator changes, owner changes, and things like that, or uses that are similar in type. We did specify the type and extent of the planning board's waiver ability, that had something, been something the planning board had discussed previously with other applications was if the board was allowed flexibility, how much flexibility the board was allowed. So we did define where, what, and what the limits are for the planning board's waiver ability, and anything that would go beyond that would require zoning board input. And we used to, and we outlined, generally outlined the process applicants need to follow. So design changes in Zone A, mixes of use, so for Zone A, less than three acres, minimum two uses, one residential, one non-residential, three to six, four uses of at least two residential, two non-residential, and more than six acres, a mix of five uses with at least three residential uses and two non-residential uses. The minimum non-residential use percentage stayed the same at 20%. Same with the open space. Instead of it being a recommendation, it is now a regulation for 20%. And we set a maximum non-residential occupancy of 25,000 square feet per user user, which still holds to the big boxes discouraged, but provides a definite boundary based on, we looked at, you know, small groceries and things like that, for coming up with that. Zone B, stuck with the same, less than three, three to six, more than six, define the uses. They trended more, we kept it so it trends more residential than non-residential in the Zone B district. We did add a minimum non-residential percentage. It was one of the areas where the code was ambiguous previously, was on how much non-residential was required or whether there was a maximum set. So we modified that. And then we upped the non-residential occupancy to 7,500 square feet per user based on feedback. Zone C continues to be residential only, same as it was. Planning board waiver gives you guys additional flexibility to be able to bend or review applications with differing ideas on what they want to do within a specific threshold during the site plan review. There will be a criteria to go through, similar to like we do with conditional use permits, to justify why a waiver is needed, but it keeps the review with the planning board instead of having to do joint planning board, zoning board. But anything that goes outside of those established thresholds would be a zoning board application for variance. And then we, this was just going through the modified table of contents for the manual. So we did change it. The manual is now, instead of being a lot of regulations, really explains what mixed use is, why mixed use in Penfield, or sort of the history of mixed use in Penfield, best practices in mixed use development design, and some examples of, from other areas of mixed use development districts that are similar in type or nature, sort of for inspiration. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I believe we provided the regulations, they were in your, the draft regulations were in the drop, as well as, I think I sent it out via email as well.
So it
It's a lot of information to process, I know.
Just like to get some, some information on the record while we're here. The town board gave us every indication last night that rather than move the proposed modifications to the zoning ordinance forward, at this time in its current state, that they would prefer to extend the moratorium to permit more dialogue between the board and the town board and from the public and from the people that this most affects, the applicants, the developers. So like to also point out for the record that there are a number of modifications in the proposed draft that have not been vetted by this board, that probably should be. And most importantly, although we did participate in the development of the new local law, there was no dialogue with this board with respect to modifications to the manual itself. We found out last night for the first time that there was a redraft of the manual. We have not received a copy. We were told that there was a copy online, but that turns out to be, at least as of last night, perhaps not accurate. So anyhow, just for the record, there's a number of things that need to take place. So, and some significant information coming from the public at large, and the testimony of one of the attorneys in the audience about how these changes might impact future development. So we just want to get that out there. There needs to be a, you know, maybe more cohesive process between what the town staff is doing and what the board agrees to before this goes back to the town board for a recommendation. And at this point, we don't know what that timing is or how long that process takes, but it appears that we probably have a month or two. Is that the sense you got, A.J.?
Yeah, I mean, the sense I got is that while they're, you know, I don't know if anybody's excited about extending the moratorium. If we can get things done by January, that would be great. It's based on the input that I saw and heard, and that has been submitted to the town, I think that there's still work to do. And I'd rather, personally, I'd rather, I don't want to, I wasn't really in favor of the moratorium to begin with, but I understand why it was put forth, and I can't believe that I'm actually saying, hey, we should extend it. Because we want to make a, we want to make forward progress with this, not lateral. We just, and there's been enough feedback that suggests that a lot of the changes are lateral changes, not making things better. So I think that we, we still have some work to do on it. I mean, that's my two cents. Terry and Bob, I don't know if you have any initial comments on it at the moment, or if
I had one question. You were talking about, you know, the zone boundaries. Is there a, I guess the term would be maybe a survey legal description of what those boundaries are, or is it more just kind of an overlay that's on a document? And then the second question is, for those zone boundaries, the waiver ability, would that rest with the planning board or the zoning board as far as those zone boundaries?
I'd probably answer both those questions. The, the original zone boundaries were just kind of overlaid over the map, not, you know, with specific locations of latitude and longitude or anything. And that is a potential gray area that we may want to tighten up and really define those because part of the suggested changes include giving the planning board some discretion on not really, let's say, reducing the size of a particular zone on a given parcel, but moving the boundaries around.
Right.
So we would need to know where they are in order to modify the location of them.
Which we've already done in two applications.
Right.
Right. We kind of adjusted, yeah.
And Peter, and Peter went on record saying that we had that kind of broad authority.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure in this iteration that, you know, that continued, or that would be one of the things that we had latitude on.
Yeah, and one of the other things is that, you know, in some of the applications, we've been asked to, say, render an opinion on, let's say, building height or, you know, some other factor. And the manual and the code as it stands, does, it wasn't really clear. And so the, some of the intent of the changes were to make those things clear, give the, this board the authority to modify or, you know, let us go back to building height. If somebody wants something a little bit higher and we determine that it's, it makes for a good project, there are factors that we consider similar to the way the zoning board weighs a variance. Or at least, that's what we're trying, trying to do, so that it's not just a willy-nilly type process, but there is an actual methodology for allowing those types of variable uh
They're not really waivers. We're not waiving, we're not being given authority to waive a requirement in the local law. It's really some discretionary authority.
Right.
We could modify some dimensional criteria or spatial criteria, you know, something along those lines.
If overall, it makes sense for the project.
We're not being given, we're not being given authority to waive something.
Okay.
That's one of the things that we need to talk about when we, when we take a deeper look at this, is some of the language that's
So, yeah, so some of the language, maybe there's a better term.
Yeah, replace the term waiver with the term, you know, discretionary authority.
Yeah.
Something along those lines, maybe. You know, we'll, we'll have to reach out to Peter and see what his thoughts are there, but.
Okay. So anyway, it is, you know, the goal is to make it better and make it more clear for everybody, us, staff, applicants, general public, so that it's a clearer, more concise process and we get successful projects that the entire town can be proud of. So with that, I don't know if there's any other quick discussion. We have about two minutes before our public hearing starts.
If you guys would like, staff could draft something quick to the town board, essentially requesting additional time to conduct further review, or to at least make the planning board's
I would move that we draft a letter to send to the town board that acknowledges the receipt of the request, that we've begun our review, that there is substantial input from the public and interested parties, that we need some additional time to review.
Okay, I can do that.
Yeah.
So I'll move that letter.
I had one other question. Doug, did we ever find out who owns the property in front? We were questioning that. You were going to find out.
The Grossman's property?
What is it?
The Grossman property, the old Grossman's?
Yeah. Because we talked about that, now that they're going, we're going to change the plans around, we're going to check.
Yeah, it's an LLC. I don't know.
Well, if we were going to address that, I'm saying, you know, at the time, we wanted to find out.
They're going, that property is under the review with code enforcement, so any action on cleaning up the property will have to go through our code enforcement process. I don't know exactly where they are on that. I believe they have issued a violation.
And it won't have anything to do with this applicant, tell me?
No, because they're not the owner of the property.
Do we have a second?
I will, I will second that motion.
Okay.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Knauer.
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye. Tidings, aye.
We will now move into the public hearing portion of our meeting. And we have one application tonight. For those of you who are not familiar with the process here in Penfield, the applicants can come up to one of these two tables and set up shop, so to speak. If you have a laptop that you want to use to present the proposed application, that is fine. I believe that's a HDMI cable that you can plug into. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Nope, you're right.
Control people. And then, once the applicant presents the project to the board, the board will ask our questions and then we'll open it up to the audience for public comment. If you are not present here in the town hall and would still like to make a comment, you can do so one of at least two ways. One way is by calling in during the meeting tonight at 585-340-8771. You will be put in a queue and we'll take your calls when the time comes. You can also visit the town of Penfield website, which is www.penfield.org. And there should be a link to this meeting on the website at which you may render an opinion in writing electronically and submit your comments that way. And you can also do that live in real time tonight. So, with that, Doug, would you please read our tonight's public hearing application? If you're the applicant, if you want to come up to one of the two tables, whichever one you prefer, and grab a chair.
Application number one, Passaro Associates, 242 West Main Street, Suite 100, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Royal Wash Development LLC, requests under Chapter 250, Article 12-12.2 and Article 13-13.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan and conditional use permit approval for the construction of a 4,100 square foot automatic car wash with associated site improvements on a 0.87 acre property at 1922 Empire Boulevard, Webster, New York, 14580. The property is now or formerly owned by Royal Wash Development LLC and Zoned General Business GB. Application number 22P-0028, SBL number 093 dot zero two two dash one dash two zero.
Okay, welcome. If you'd just introduce yourselves and where you're from, name and address, that would be great for the record. And let's hear what you've got.
So, I'm Alex Benoit. I'm the representative for Royal Wash Development, live in Pittsburgh, New York.
Excuse me, could the applicant hold his microphone, please?
Yes.
There are millions of folks around the planet watching, and they all want to hear what you have to say.
I bet, I bet. So, yeah, Alex Benoit, Royal Wash Development, Pittsburgh, New York.
Andrew Burns, Passaro Associates, civil engineer representing Royal Wash Development.
Okay.
Do apologize, we seem to have some issues sharing this.
I think our PCT info...
If the applicant would proceed, I will come up and take a look.
Okay.
I'll pull it up for you.
In the meantime, we might be able to use the PDFs that are on mics, and you can just say, hey, Vanna, next slide, kind of thing. He loves it when you call him Vanna.
And those look to be the most recent, so that should do just fine. Again, Andrew Burns from Passaro Associates, representing Royal Wash Development. We are here tonight requesting site plan approval and conditional use permit for an automatic car wash located at 1922 Empire Boulevard, Zoned General Business. The existing site is 0.82 acres and currently, well, its existing use was a Taco Bell. I believe they are relocating up the road. The project would consist of removing the existing building, most of the existing pavement, while maintaining the access points, both on Empire Boulevard and down to Baytown Plaza to the south. From either access point, customers can enter from, again, Empire or from the Baytown Plaza. They'll enter one of three stacking lanes, which they will pass through an unmanned kiosk. Most of our customers are prepaid members, so the process is generally pretty quick. They will then loop around, enter the tunnel, get their car cleaned. And for those of you who haven't seen, they do have that nice brick facade and the angled roof in which they will leave the car wash with a rather long exit lane, which is beneficial for any stacking issues along Empire, from which they can either exit the site and/or double back into the site to utilize the vacuums. To date, we have attended a design review meeting with PRC, in which we heard, you know, their initial comments. I believe that was generally well-received. We've submitted to the town, obviously the planning board, as well as ZBA. Since then, we've received comments from the PRC and landscaping, which we have received and addressed to date, which, and that's what we brought here tonight. I apologize, it wasn't a bit sooner, but everything, again, has been addressed to date. As far as agencies, New York State DOT has been submitted to because we're not doing any proposed work within the right-of-way. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
They will not require...
All right. Hey, you can put that down if you'd like.
Thanks, Alex.
Vanna, too.
So, yes, we did submit the project to DOT, in which they determined if we were not doing any work in the right-of-way, no permit was required. The project has also been submitted to and approved by Monroe County Water Authority and Pure Waters for both the water and sanitary services. We do require some variances for the site, one of them being a side setback for the building. That just helps us get that third stacking lane in there. Building mounted signage, you're only allowed two, or allowed one, we're requesting two. And then also a pole sign setback and green space setback, both of which the existing site and use have variances for. And I just want to touch base quickly on landscaping. As I said, we are slightly increasing the, or decreasing the green space, but, you know, we think we more than make up for it with the proposed landscaping around the perimeter, screen along the front and the south, I believe, it's gas station along, as well as the plaza on the south and east sides of the property.
Is that Valvoline?
I don't think...
No, it's the Hess station.
Oh, the Hess station's right next door. Okay, thank you.
Speedway, probably, no, right?
Or Speedway, yeah, sorry, Speedway.
And with that, Alex and myself, we're happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Can you go through the architecturals, maybe? Do you have renderings with you?
I have elevations.
Is this going to be a Royal or a Go Car Wash?
Ultimately, it'll be a Go Car Wash. So, to be developed by Royal Wash Development, Go Car Wash will take over the operations portion.
Yeah, I just had a question because the, I didn't, I've never seen the actual Go. I think you got one or two of them actual Go compared to the Royal, I've been by Royal.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know which one it's going to look like.
They're currently all operated by Go Car Wash. The signage is in the process of being converted over. I think the one off the 390 over by the airport.
Charlie, yeah.
Yeah, that one's converted over. And then various others have started their signage transition.
To Go, to Go.
To Go Car Wash.
Change to Go, so Royal.
Yeah, the branding.
But the buildings will still, so, that building looked a little different. I didn't really look at it closely. Will it look more like the Go one or the Royal, like on Monroe or Webster?
All the buildings are actually identical.
Really?
Yeah. There might be slight variations in height.
I found this on the web.
At times, but for the most part, they're all identical, yeah. Did you say on the web? We did open two in the Buffalo area that were different. They were purchased, Royal Car Wash purchased them from another developer and it had already been through town approvals and we had to keep them, the designs different. So, there are two, if you search around on the web, that were in Hamburg and West Seneca that are different. But other than that, this is our standard design.
Sorry.
No, no, that's totally fine. Can you maybe go through some of the architectural features of the structure? Is it brick or is it brick?
So, I might use the wrong terminology here, but it's all quick brick. So, it's like a bricks facade, like, what do you call them?
Same thing McDonald's uses.
Yeah.
Like a thin brick facade type panel or whatever? Is it actual brick material or is it plastic?
No, it's all a brick material, but it's essentially like a CMU brick, but it's a brick material. Am I saying that right?
I believe so, yeah. It's actually not, it's not clay. It's actually a concrete product.
Okay.
But it has the look of brick. So, rather than putting in a block backup and putting a brick veneer on it, they call it quick brick because you bed the CMU and inside it's concrete mason reun and outside it looks like brick.
Hmm, okay. With the texture and everything.
They have all different kinds of textures, but you can see what they're looking at here. You know, this is, you know, standard running bond, it's, yeah.
Terry, do you have any other...
Yeah, I had just a couple of ones. The variances, you said four altogether?
That's correct.
And you're scheduled, what, December 15th for zoning board on that, correct?
It's actually the January meeting.
Oh, January 8th?
I believe it's the 19th.
19th, yep, it's the 19th. It's the week after our meeting.
How hours of operation?
They operate eight to eight.
Every day?
Monday through Saturday. Sunday, I think they close an hour early, seven.
Lighting on the building, 24/7 or 8/8?
No. The lighting is during hours of operations, I think with some leeway as staff comes in and leaves, so a half hour and an hour before and after. And then they have just the wall sconces or wall packs overnight.
A.J.'s my lighting expert.
Okay.
I'll come in, I'm sure. And then lighting, that's part of the...
Most likely.
Now, you've got two entrances, one in Empire, you said, one goes out into the Baytown, correct?
Correct.
So, is that like the emergency exit, if you need to get out, say, somebody gets in line to go through the car wash, they can zip out in the back?
No, the emergency exit, there's a spillway there after the pay lanes. That's the way out of the wash sequence.
There to the left.
Yeah, just as you're entering the tunnel, there's an exit way from the...
Blow that up there, Andy.
How many cars can you stack once they come out of the car wash down Empire Boulevard, you know?
I believe it's nine.
Nine?
Yeah, it's right on here. It's on sheet two.
Is that what they usually are, nine, stacking?
Oh, sorry, six.
It varies all over the map. I know we have some with only two to three.
This escape lane, do you have any others in the whole, in your whole system that are configured in the same fashion where they spill out into the inbound...
Into the inbound?
Inbound pay lanes where they're, you know, you're going to be basically going the wrong way down a one-way street, essentially?
Yeah, I do believe we do. I'm having trouble coming up with the exactly which one at the moment.
And what kind of, you know, out of every hundred cars, how many, oh, shoot, you know, I can't do this right now, I need to bail out and go get a cheeseburger or something. How many?
The intent for that lane is truly for an actual breakdown, in which point, you know, I believe the employees would come out, back up all the cars, it'd be quite the process. But just to clear out those cars past the booths, I believe if you actually couldn't do it, you are kind of stuck going through there, but, you know, I'm sure, I believe the attendant wouldn't charge or anything like that, that they'd help you get out of there. But if you are getting those three Q lanes or not, I don't think they're going to back everyone out just because someone doesn't want to.
Well, yeah, I guess I'm asking the question more as a, how often does it happen?
It's extremely rare, yeah.
Is it...
I'd say out of 360 days of operation, there's maybe two or three days where you get one or two customers that might do that.
Okay, so it's...
It's very infrequent, yeah.
It's very rare.
Yeah.
Again, most of the customers being prepaid members, they kind of know what they're getting themselves into when they go in there, you know, and I guess this entrance to the south here...
What is the percentage of prepaid versus cash?
Seventy-five to eighty percent.
Seventy-five to eighty percent?
Yeah.
How about, where are you going to store snow?
I think it was labeled on the...
Yeah, we agree, the site's pretty tight, but we do have some, you know, green space to the south of those stacking lanes. And then, obviously, in a bad situation, you know, we've hauled snow off before. We'd bring in loaders and buckets and bring it off-site if we had to.
So, if you're, what kind of landscaping is going in there that will, will that accept piles of snow?
Yeah, I believe we went with just taller trees in that area. Nothing too small.
Salt resistant?
Yes.
Do you know how much of a variance you need for the green space? What is it now and what will it be?
Yeah. Yeah, so, existing, they have 0.22 acres, and we're proposing 0.19, so 0.03, very close.
So, about 1,300 square feet less?
Yep, plus or minus.
But you said it's going to be awesome.
Yes.
Green space.
Correct.
To make up for it.
Is that what Lopez said or is that what you guys said? Not Lopez, I mean...
Bruce Soretsky.
Yeah, Bruce Soretsky.
Well, we're talking about that. Bruce didn't make any comment about that and maybe he's not been made aware of that, but I'd love to see Bruce's opinion as to whether or not the mountain type of landscaping and the maturity of the plant materials is, in his opinion, robust enough to overcome a reduction in the green space. Because, you know, we see a lot of really terrific landscaping plants and, you know, we drive by the facility later and they're, you know, they're six-inch plants. And in the rendering, they're like three-feet bushes, you know.
Forty-five years from now and everybody's hanging out in the shade.
I would love to see Bruce's comment about that. And, you know, he may come back and say, you know, great job, but, you know, instead of, you know, one-inch caliper, you need three-inch caliper, you know, something.
Yep.
If we're going to use that as a...
You've got time, they've got time anyways to...
Yeah, we got, yeah, we got to wait for the variances.
So, it was, yeah, so, we've received comments from their landscape review, or we've returned the comments, but I think you're talking about reaching out additionally to confirm...
Yeah, just for that one.
Yep.
For that one item, yeah.
The dumpster enclosures, what's that proposed to be made out of?
Right now, white vinyl fencing.
So, we've had, we've had some difficulty with how well, you know... So we've had, we've had some difficulty with how well, you know, those kinds of structures hold up over time. Always prefer to have the same material that's used for the core of the building facade, be the same material for the dumpster enclosure.
That's not a problem. If that's a requirement, we do that. Is that, is that something we should pursue?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. That whole southwest, let's call it quadrant, to the west of the entryway, that's all vacs, vacuums?
Yes, along the southern side of the property there. I believe we have 11 of them, 10 or 11.
And the parking is mostly probably for staff?
Correct, yeah.
There's really no reason for a customer to get out of their car except to cause problems?
That's correct. One, once or twice, they might come into the office to purchase a membership, but, you know, we have two to, two to six, two to eight staff done on maybe busy days, and those spots are for them, and the remaining are typically customers using the vacuum stalls.
One thing I've noticed over time, and I guess more and more over time, is outside a lot of car wash operations on the street, in the winter, it's always wet, and that section of the roadway gets damaged far more quickly, pitted and potholes and all that stuff, before other areas, you know, parts of the road that are not right in front of the exit of the car wash. What's been your experience with that?
It's, yeah, it's certainly been an issue. You know, these cars do come out inherently wet, and they're dripping, and I know it's something new, that even though the DOT has noticed that, it hasn't really warranted, they've talked about, you know, do you replace an entire lane with concrete there, and it's never really warranted that. I will say, we've moved to heated concrete pads at the entrance and the exit of the vehicle. In this longer runout, for this site specifically, will certainly help, you know, give that car some extra dry time on the way out to Empire.
So these pads are heated here?
Correct, yeah. The first 25 feet on each side of the building are heated concrete.
Have you ever been required to, I don't know, have some sort of agreement to make repairs to roads, or anything like that?
I haven't seen that.
Not to my knowledge.
What about, I mean, I'm thinking that the exit out into, that's Baytown, right?
Yep.
To the south and the center? Do you have any type of, I mean, are they aware, the owners there, aware of that?
I would have to look into that. I believe there's an existing agreement with the Taco Bell, so there's a cross-access easement, I believe, so we'd be hoping to take over that if that's indeed what's in place, but we will certainly confirm that.
With most of the cross-access easements that I've seen, there's always an agreement between the two sites on maintenance of the shared usage, but we'd have to check with...
Yeah.
Check with DeMarco, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking, unless you like throw tacos out your window, there's all that grease and stuff that gets into the pavement, wouldn't have as much impact as a car wash.
I would bet that most of the exiting will be out on the...
On the Empire.
And very few will be coming out of there. Probably a lot of the people that use the vacuums and sit there and leave all their water on the...
On that pad. Would you consider doing that all in concrete?
I guess it's important to note, the entire site is concrete pavement.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, just those two portions are heated by the building.
I see.
So the entire site will be...
Concrete, not asphalt.
Yep, with the expanse and joints and, you know, joints for that, and control joints as well, so.
Would that, would that exit lane have a little bit of a pitch to it, so water wouldn't stand, it would drain?
Yeah, I'd have to, well, certainly that's the one, I know on Empire for sure, that entrance does pitch back onto the site. It's a DOT requirement, and I will double-check, but I believe that the access point down to Baytown also will pitch back onto the site, because typically, you know, no one wants you spilling your water in the neighboring property.
Right.
We tend to make a habit to catch all of our own water.
Town code prohibits it, anyway.
Right.
Any other questions?
Vacuum cleaners, you just said issues, we got the noise, were those vacuum cleaners pretty standard, or?
So I don't know that we weren't able to provide any actual attenuation data at this point. I will say that majority of the noise from these vacuums comes from the, Anthony, or Alex, stop me if I'm wrong, the vacuum motor pad and blower itself. I believe at this site, we can eliminate this blower pad, and by putting this right by Empire, a lot of that noise is going to be drowned out by Empire Boulevard itself, the background noise.
Yeah, the difficulty was that is during the times of the week where there's not a lot of vehicular traffic out there, and you might have more people cleaning their cars, then you will have noise generation from the vacuums. So we've had some other car wash projects come to the town, and I guess there's some new technology for these vacuums that are very low zone, producing motors, and, you know, the air vortex kind of dissipates before it exits the top of the cone, and I am not suggesting that you do this, but we've seen some really good DB charts about what a typical vacuum produces in terms of sound, and what these new ones do, and, you know, as compared to normal traffic sounds, and, you know.
I know our vacuum supplier, we do have a, they call it a silencer on the outlet port of the turbine, so I got to imagine we can get something like that.
I'm sure they'll have, everybody's going to ask for this.
Yeah.
But, you know, while we're talking about that, this is great, but, you know, we generally don't accept, like, last-minute information. We require information to be submitted the previous Friday to the board hearing, so that the board has an opportunity to really go through and review stuff. So there might be some other questions, you know, as...
Coming up, based on the most recent submittal?
Yeah. But certainly, that's one that jumps out, some more information and...
Yeah, and the vacuums, maybe next time you come in front of us, bring some stuff on the vacuums.
Certainly.
Bob, any questions?
No, I'm set. You took, you guys took two of the ones I had in mind.
You can have...
That was, that was covered.
Well, Terry was looking over your shoulder, he passed me.
Yeah.
Steel Bob's question.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, I'd like to open it up for the audience. There's, don't think there's anybody in the auditorium at the moment that is interested in speaking. Let me check the phone lines. If there's any online comments, doesn't seem to be any. Thank you very much for your presentation. We will take in all the information, we'll probably have some additional questions, and...
Did you guys, we went and sent anything to Lopez, or you guys all set with the, anything else?
Personally, I'm comfortable with the architecture of the, I mean, I've seen the washes around town, I think they're nice-looking, and...
Just, just that one question for Bruce, in fact, it would be, it would probably be helpful to the ZBA as well.
Potentially. So, yes, thanks for your presentation, nicely done, and we will call us here and closed.
Great, thank you.
Okay. We just need to wrap up our, you're welcome to stay, if you'd like.
Does sound fun.
The only thing that we're talking about is your application, so...
Nothing else going on on Thursday.
So anybody have any comments beyond what we discussed to put into a tabling resolution?
No, this is a, this is a perfect place in town for a car wash.
I should have, I think I should have been over here, how, 2441, actually, that would have been...
I wouldn't have, you know, I'd be there every day, because I like to keep my car clean.
Bob, any other comments?
No. Looks good.
Doug, you have the pertinent information that we've...
I do.
Questions?
Mike, you have any concerns about this?
No, I mean, I think they've addressed most of our concerns. We just need some more clarification on the stormwater aspect of the project, just because we do have code requirements for the 20% reduction in runoff, so I just need calculations showing how they achieve that, so.
Put that in the letter.
Yep.
For their next meeting.
Okay. Terry, you want to move to table?
I will move to table, this application tidings.
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Any other business that we need to discuss this evening?
It's all I had for you guys tonight.
All right, then we will adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Have a great holiday season, and...
2023.
Don't do anything stupid.